Okay, it is eighteen hundred hours. I'm gonna call this workshop to order. Um, Councilman Mike Hammer will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lefler Ropel.
Mayor Medina.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Jaffe.
Present.
Councilman Johnson, who is absent. Councilman Hammer.
Present.
Councilman Landjevan.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Okay. One item of business discussion of our post-budget for this fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year, I'm deferring to Mr. Matthew Morton.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Just, uh, we've got a presentation tonight that's, I think, a lot more specific and, and honed in from the last week, but we did go back and, and work on the budget, refine it. And so I've just got a brief introduction on, on the budget I think we tried to craft and present tonight to the City Council. So, um, it's our belief that the fiscal year twenty twenty-six proposed budget for the city of Palm Bay is more than just a financial document. We really tried to deliver a dynamic and thoughtful blueprint, blueprint for the future of this community. And it was crafted meticulously to address critical needs, to foster sustainable growth, and more importantly, enhance the quality of life for all the residents in the community. This budget begins to attempt to execute strategic vision that this city has laid forth, reflecting insightful parameters and recommendations that have emerged for not only from the budget workshops, but from community feedback, from the stated goals and objectives that are on record for the city of Palm Bay. More importantly, it's my hope that this budget stands as an invitation for this community to choose its preferred future. And I think that is based off what you will see, which is an attempt to have more thorough fiscal, um, and prudent fiscal management, greater accountability, and the continuous improvement that this community has asked for, and a budget that is responsive to the needs and delivers the essential public services. I, I do think it's a great statement on the city's dedication to fiscal equity. It ensures that the benefits of strategic financial planning reach every corner of the community and enhance the lives of all its residents. In other words, we try to deliver public value through this budget. And we did this in a couple of ways. One is prioritizing public safety for everyone in the community. And you'll notice a significant portion of this budget is strategically invested to safeguard our community through crucial allocation of resources towards police and fire vehicles, towards our ability and capacity to respond to emergency citywide through investments in roads and other public safety initiatives. It also is investing in our shared infrastructure. You'll notice one of the biggest commitments is the equitable infrastructure development and maintenance with a substantial three and a quarter million dollar contribution to dedicate an ongoing road maintenance funding supplemented by an additional one point two five million from local option gas tax. Uh, furthermore, as everyone's aware, the debt requirements met on the GO bonds for go-roads, which continue to try to address our most pressing traffic, uh, and congestion concerns. We try to present a budget that is fair and equitable in growth and development and allocates and plans for the strategic current and future use of impact fees, which are meant to enhance our community to offset impacts of growth and development. We did focus on core services that affect the entire community. That's reflected in our Public Works Department, which accounts for a large share of the budget of the expenditures out of the, uh, general fund, but Public Works has the mandate to provide essential services to our citizens in a prompt, courteous, safe, efficient, and cost-effective manner while they plan to design, build, maintain, and operate pub, public infrastructure in a manner that respects the environment and cultivates a genuine, transparent relationship with our citizens, our visitors, our stakeholders, our businesses, and of course, addresses the concerns that council brings to us. Try to deliver a budget that shows overall fiscal prudence and also hits on the core key of controlling personnel growth, leaving, uh, no new FTEs with the exception of potentially of, uh, uh, additions of police or fire in this budget and a commitment to evaluate overall personnel services, which represent a, a large share of the general fund for next year. And I think it also empowered departmental accountability. Each department did thoroughly review their funding needs. They identified the available dollars that could be reallocated towards core priorities and, uh, reallocated those towards higher priority requirements, which I think helped foster efficiency and ownership of this, uh, budget process. As you know, we took some departures from what traditionally has been prepared as a budget in Palm Bay, and I think we'll see that process evolve even, uh, to be more objective and more transparent moving into the next fiscal years. We plan to start the budget in January, but tonight I, I just want to sort of set the stage. I think that's the notes that we tried to hit in, in delivering a budget to you and, and the community tonight.
Good evening, Council. My name is Angelica Collins. I'm the Assistant Finance Director and I oversee budget and capital and asset management. Um, I have our team here tonight. Um, we have Shane Bird. He's our budget analyst. Jessica Hinchman, she's our budget program administrator. And then after our presentation, you will have Sean Spillers, um, our capital and asset management program, uh, program coordinator come up and talk about specifically the capital program that we have built for twenty twenty-six. Um, so we are up here. We're gonna tag-team the presentation a little bit. Um, so what I'll go ahead and do, I'll get it started and review our agenda for tonight. Um, this evening, our, uh, presentation will be slightly different than the last workshop. We are focusing solely on fiscal year twenty twenty-six and the proposed budget that we have built for you um, to review based on the previous budget workshops. Um, some of the slides will look familiar. We have presented them previously, but we, for transparency purposes, we'll go ahead and review them again. I won't spend too much time on them just because they've, they've been, um, talked about before, but it's still an integral part of this presentation. Um, we'll first go over your proposed budget revenue and expenditures. We will first look at all funds, which includes your enterprise funds, and then specifically the general fund. Then we will, um, go into the budget requests for next fiscal year, and then, um, we'll go ahead and take some time still to talk about our taxable values and our mileage rates, how it impacts the general fund and our load of debt mileage. Um, then we'll go ahead and end the evening with any questions or concerns, um, and then try to set some goals as we leave here this evening on our last budget workshop before we move into the actual adoption of the budget in the month of September. So our first item that we'll go through is our all funds and financials.
Good evening. This slide that we're looking at right now, um, essentially illustrates how the three hundred and twenty-four point seven million dollars in revenues is split up. Um, you'll primarily see, um, as a note that this is covering all funds, so that's why you're gonna see charges for services at that one hundred and twenty-one point three million, making up thirty-eight percent of that total. And that's primarily gonna be from your enterprise funds, uh, utility, uh, service fees, and customers paying those fees. Um, and then, of course, getting into property taxes. Now, just as a note on this particular slide, this is purely just giving you revenues and excludes the amount of a hundred and ninety-one million in carryforward that we're gonna be using, that fund balance that's already encumbered to projects and other expenditures. Um, so this just is purely giving you that, that composition of revenue. And then as we get into this next slide, you'll see the kind of historic breakdown from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-six proposed, um, really just showing some of the changes, uh, for example, on charges for services. You expect that to grow as your customer base grows, as development grows. So of course, we're gonna see that increase. Um, you'll see a modest increase in your utility taxes, kind of corresponding to that development and growth. Um, a slight decline in licenses and permits, and that's primarily due to a slight decrease in development and growth in the city of Palm Bay. Just a five percent reduction. Um, and then lastly, your miscellaneous and one-time revenues are down by nine point nine million. So going into this next slide on declining one-time revenues, as y'all are aware, we had the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, or as it's often known, known as, uh, ARPA. Um, we're actually at the end of the ARPA stimulus era, and this is just really highlighting some of those one-time revenues as they're, um, decreasing going in FY twenty-six. And just to note, um, it's really just highlighting also that any future capital needs will be leaning on any of those recurring revenues and reserves that we have.
Your next slide is essentially a, um, two to three-year historical look at the all-funds revenues based on the types and descriptions that we take in. So you see a historical trend going back to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, actuals, twenty-three actuals and twenty-four. We'll, we'll look at a little bit at this year with our adopted amended budget, and then, um, the right column is your actual, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six proposed budget. So that is what is highlighted in the um, little orange, um, brackets there. Um, the difference between the all-funds and the general fund is what Shane had mentioned, is that really in the all-funds, charges for services is your highest revenue source at, um, approximately a hundred and twenty-one point three million out of the five hundred and fifteen million, because this is where primarily your utilities and stormwater fees so, um, are collected. So those user charges is where that, that information would be reflected. Um, for transparency purposes, we do publish this as this is also published in the proposed budget.
Okay, and as we jump into expenditures, again, this is covering all funds, but this really gives you a good composition showing that infrastructure, which includes your public works and utilities, makes up fifty percent of that total, followed by your public safety, which is your police and fire, um, of eighteen percent. And really, this just shows you overall in totality, what does those expenditures by functional category look like for the city of Palm Bay?
For transparency purposes, the, um, all-funds expenditure side, uh, overall on the ba, on the balancing will balance the revenues, because that is a statutory requirement, is that we do have to balance revenues to expenditures to the dollar. Um, this is a two-page slide, um, two-pager, just because we do have several departments that are included on this that you won't see in general fund. Uh, primarily building utilities, there are primarily, um, enterprise funds, and then, um, with public works, you will see heavily their stormwater, solid waste is also included in that. Um, so again, for transparency purposes, um, these are all your funds, all, all departments across all funds, meaning general. Um, you will have, um, enterprise funds, revenue funds, um, uh, I'm sorry, uh, housing, all of that grants funds that are included. Um, so this is across all funds, a historical. Um, going to the second page, as you see, um, we have utilities coming in at the hundred and fifteen million out of that five hundred and fifteen. So that's where those user charges are heavily high up. Um, but again, this is just showing you, um, when it comes to the revenues and how all those revenues across all funds are divvied amongst all departments that operate within the city. Um, looking at the expenditures from a different point of view, um, we go ahead and actually, uh, break them down by type. Um, by type means that we report on personnel services, operating capital, we have debt service, um, any transfers or reserves that we use to balance those funds. Um, this category different than the general fund. Within the all-funds, you will see capital contributions being the largest marker out of, um, the totality of the five hundred and fifteen million, um, where a hundred and seventy-four million of that are towards capital projects. Um, you won't see that so much in the general fund. This is primarily, you will see a lot of utilities, um, projects. You have your GO bond road pro, projects that are included and, uh, stormwater projects. So, um, across all funds, the capital side will be heavier than in the general fund.
Okay, so looking at this slide, um, if you recall, uh, from the very start of this presentation, I mentioned the three hundred and twenty-four point seven million in revenues, and then there was a hundred and ninety-one in carryforward that we're gonna be using, and that is primarily already encumbered to projects primarily in your utilities, um, stormwater and related types of projects. So that's what's making up the vast majority of that, but this just gives you essentially an illustration of how do we get to balance our revenues to those expenditures and really that composition of revenue and our carryforward amounts. Okay, and then this, uh, gives us a good snapshot of the enterprise funds in context, kind of showing you that, um, as mentioned earlier, utilities leads with that hundred and fifteen. Um, and then you'll note that, uh, building is next with solid waste and stormwater. And that's, this is all a hundred percent self-funded via user fees and charges. The general fund doesn't subsidize these funds at all, so this is purely generated by your customer base.
We'll go ahead and take a little bit of a higher level deep dive, I guess, uh, looking at the enterprise funds expenditure. So we did wanna break, break them down into your enterprise funds. You'll have your two utilities operating fund, which, um, this is primarily where all your utilities operations take place and where the user fees do come in. Um, utilities, capital funds, your building fund, um, stormwater utility, and, um, solid waste. Um, solid waste at the nineteen million does not have any employees. It is essentially a user fee, uh, payment for, um, the trash collection, and then it goes back out to go ahead and pay for the trash collection. Um, so while the solid waste fund is an enterprise fund, they, those are the only two type activities you'll actually see in that fund. Um, again, this mirrors what we have been saying is that on the capital investment side, uh, you, utilities will take the lead, that out of all the funds, they are coming in at a, the capital side of the seventy-nine million dollars, where those capital investments, um, primarily projects, um, will take place.
Okay, jumping in real quick to look at personnel, o, o, overall, um, this is looking at your overall personnel, um, and that's looking at a hundred and twenty-five point nine, which is a small, uh, five, less than five percent raise or increase. Um, and overall, just to note that general fund pays seventy-three percent of the salaries of police, fire, parks, and other supporting departments, and then the rest is essentially split up with your other funds, and that's gonna include things like your utilities, um, and then, uh, some of these other, uh, internal service funds. So just really showing the composition of how much of your personnel is, is paid by the various funds, and you can see right there that it's primarily gonna be general fund and your utilities, operating funds, with third being stormwater. Yep, and then this chart, uh, or this, uh, this table essentially just breaks that down in a, in a, uh, tablature form, so that way you can kind of see that, that composition and how it breaks. And again, showing the three top ones being general fund, utilities, operating, and then stormwater utility fund.
So now we're gonna go ahead and take a deep dive into the general fund. Um, mostly our presentations will focus on the general fund financials mainly because the ad valorem taxation rate is what drives the revenue in this fund, where almost three-quarters of that, um, is actually the sole revenue of this fund that's based tied to the taxation rate. So we'll go ahead and talk a little bit about revenues and the expenditures. Um, this slide should look familiar to you, so this is what we presented at our last budget workshop. Um, what we had done is we went ahead and built the, uh, general fund budget on the six point seven three three nine ta, um, tax rate. Um, so we are not increasing our tax rate. It is staying the same, so we, um, setting it at, um, oh, we have proposed it at the six point seven three three nine, which is our current tax rate. So what we've done is, is that we have, um, looked at the incoming revenues for that, um, uh, ad valorem taxation based on that rate and the expenditures that have been, um, put into the base budget, meaning that, um, departments were given an operating maximum, and, um, that's, we went ahead and went through that and came up with an eight point two million dollars of, of funds that, um, could be used. So of course, um, there's contractual increases, there are, um, union contract increases to personnel, so that whole eight point two isn't necessarily available, just because we have additional debt service that has to be, has to be paid. But, um, that is the calculation that we came up with. Um, we've also had a plan of, um, again, we initially went to the four-month reserve, but, um, we had reverted back to the two-month reserve, um, also including the, uh, stabilization fund of the four point, um, oh percent. That's usually the target that we have. That's the set aside. And what we're also, uh, planning on doing is setting aside an additional two point five million on top of the two-month reserve. So that was those discussions that happened at the previous council meetings, that even though we were reverting back to the two-month, we were setting aside additional funds to start beginning to increase that reserve to the desire that, in the future, future change. Um, so looking at all that, we had an available balance that we were able to roll forward from fiscal year twenty-four. So we took fiscal year twenty-four. We looked at any savings that may have happened during personnel, um, service costs with vacancies or any unspent funds. And so, so did we added that together. So in total, um, we were able to set aside fifteen point five million between new money revenue and any savings that we had. And we went through the list of requests that Jessica is going to talk about in a little bit, and, um, we looked at what we were able to fund with that. Um, so again, um, we're still showing you the three percent cap side, the rollback side, but we're maintaining the rate at a six point seven three three nine, so that is what we went ahead and based this budget on. As I mentioned, is that even though, um, we have eight point two six or eight point three million in new revenue, um, that doesn't mean that all that money is available. So we first have to look at our personnel. Um, we have union contract increases, uh, for fire and police, and I know Nage is currently in, in negotiations. Um, so we have to build all of that in, and of course, our debt service. Um, so if debt service would increase, then all that does have to be paid. Um, so we found it important to provide you with, um, the increases from the personnel side on what we actually had to include. So that tells you that even though we kind of start with that eight point three million, um, those required increases from that, that personnel side, um, really takes more than half of that new revenue that we already have to put towards required increases to pay for personnel. Um, so for twenty-six, um, our firefighters, so our IAFF rank-and-file and supervisors unit, um, within their contractual increases that are required to put, um, a ten percent increase per person. Um, with FOP, between the officer sergeant and lieutenant units, um, it varies slightly, um, but we're looking anywhere between a five to an eight percent increase for those employees. Um, we have included a five percent, um, cost of living increase for general employees, and Nage Blue are currently in negotiations, so you will see that come back um, more than likely sometime in the first quarter of the new year to make those adjustments, depending on what the outcome of those negotiations are. Um, I always, always find it very important to, um, disclose our pension contribution requirements. Um, so every year, our actuarial report comes out where it tells us our required contributions for the following year. Um, so we'll provide you what we paid this year in, um, fire and police contributions, which was roughly about eight point four million, and our required contributions for twenty-six have increased by two point, roughly about two point six million. Um, so as the staffing increases, but also as their, um, contractual salary requirement increase, you will continue to see that pension contribution requirement, and this is something that we have to pay. This is a non-negotiable item. So, uh, my projection is, is even though we are maybe not adding any FTEs this year, just mainly because of the contractual increases for their pay, I will, would still anticipate a significant increase for twenty-seven, even though we may not add any actual FTEs for, um, twenty-six according to the proposed budget. Similar slide as when we are looking at the all-funds revenue, but now we'll dive into the general fund. Um, as I mentioned, this does look different as in our primary source of revenues for the a hundred and fifty-five million dollar proposed budget in the general fund, um, where, um, a little less than half would be from your property taxes, which would be the ad valorem taxation. Um, so we are looking at about sixty-seven point, uh, three million in, um, property taxes or ad valorem taxation based on the six point seven three three nine rate of maintaining it, um, close to this year. Um, so that will be, be your primary source of revenue. Um, we do still have, um, uh, charges for services that are collected, but your intergovernmental will generally be um, your, your second along with your communication service tax. So those are those state-shared revenues that we receive based on the calculations that come from the state. So between those intergovernmental communication service tax and ad valorem taxation, that would be your primary source of revenue, um, that comes from, from the state. Um, one thing that you will see different in twenty-six for a proposed budget is the fund balance. You will see a fund balance of twenty dol, twenty million dollars that we have built in. You won't see that in the current year's adopted budget because we've sort of changed that strategy. So as you see in, in twenty-five, as we came into the fiscal year, you still saw a lot of requests come to council on frequent budget amendments, frequent asks, and what we are changing and planning with departments is actually focusing on planning for the future in order to reduce the continuous asks throughout the, the regular council meetings. Um, so the plan is to reduce budget amendments and actually build in, um, any types of needs that we may have, and we've also have any projects and, um, purchase orders that we, instead of rolling them, departments are actually required to plan for next year. Um, same method of budgeting, um, but instead of continuously amending the budget throughout the year, we're building in that fund balance and using those reserves to, um, go ahead and already offset some of those requests that, um, we may not be able to fund with new revenue, and then also those project and those open POs. So it just helps departments plan a little bit better, understand their budget a little bit better, and be a little bit more involved. Uh, when we look at the expenditure side, it's just that one pager. Um, so on the expenditure side, it'll mirror very often what you will see probably for most municipalities and any taxing authorities that your public safety departments will make up probably the, the largest portion, um, in the general fund, which would be your police and fire. So, um, out of the hundred and fifty-five million that we are proposing for next year, between, um, fire and police, you're looking at about eighty-five million dollars. And that would include their personnel operating and if any capital was, was actually included. Um, so this is what the makeup would be for those particular departments. A lot of depart, people ask what general government is. So general government um, will actually include any debt service that the, um, general fund has to pay, and you'll see that in the next slide. Or you will have things like, um, the liability and property insurance that the general fund essentially has to pay. Um, any fleet service charges, so anything that impacts more than one department. Um, so for example, our fleet service charges, um, that go to the fleet fund to pay for maintenance and for fuel, impact fire, police, um, maybe growth management if they have a vehicle. Um, so it impacts more than one department. So instead of breaking those out, they're lumped in the general fund department, general government department. The next slide again breaks it down by type. So this is a great slide to look at. So again, we're looking at the a hundred and fifty-five million of, um, total proposed for, for, um, fiscal year twenty-six. Um, this mirrors what Shane kind of spoke about, is that out of the hundred and fifty-five million, ninety-two is, is paid for personnel. Um, so this is salaries, um, benefits, workers' compensation, any ad pays for all those departments that operate in the general fund. Um, so you're talking, um, you know, more than three-quarters of that is, is actually set aside for your personnel service. Um, that service is pi, five point seven eight million dollars. So what we do is, is we, um, collect all the debt service payments, principal and interest that are due for the next year, and those are lumped together. So those are must-have-to-pay things. Um, we're continuing to contribute the three point two five million to road maintenance. So what we do, it's a transfer of cash that goes to that fund to go ahead and support any future, um, road maintenance needs. We also continuing to set aside one point two five million for the, our local go, local option gas tax revenue. So that is one of those state-shared revenues that comes to us. So we are setting that aside as well, and that is to similar road maintenance type of needs. Um, so it's not just three point two five, it's essentially those two added together, but they should be used also on, on road maintenance types of needs. Um, the other big item that, um, our city manager has wanted to start for, uh, starting fiscal year twenty-six is an emergency, um, fleet, uh, replacement fund or reserve. So essentially, that is a set aside that we are doing for any type of urgent vehicle replacement needs that we may have that come up, that normally we would have to come to you and ask for money from fund balance. Um, prime example is, is that our police department had, um, three vehicles that were, um, that were totaled through a vehicular accident, or one of them was a fire, and those are the types of things where we need that quick turnaround to get that police officer back into a vehicle. And so what we are doing is going forward is a setting certain funds aside and building that fund to be able to make those replacements um, in a faster level. And so we are dedicating the six hundred thousand dollars, um, it, to do that. Um, again, we have continued, continued commitment dedicated to, uh, road maintenance. We have, uh, the new reserves added to the fleet replacement, and, um, we had spoken about the designated, uh, fund balance of actually using funds, um, in the future to offset those continued project and PO, um, open purchase orders that are, um, needing to be paid in fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, so similarly to the previous slide that I, I discussed regarding personnel, this one is purely just a breakdown of general funds personnel. And as you can see, uh, the vast majority of that seventy percent is made up of your public safety. That's your police and fire. And then third being your infrastructure, which is your public works department taking eight percent of that total. And then the rest is essentially your core departments that support the other primary departments in a, in a, in a way. Uh, and that's how I always like to illustrate is that that last twenty percent really supports the whole of the organization. And it really just articulates how much of that personnel spend, um, is split up between the various general fund departments. And then again, similar to the previous And then again, similar to the previous uh all funds personnel snapshot, this gives you the table breakdown by department for the general fund personnel. Just again highlighting that that breakdown um of those top three to four departments.
So now we'll turn over to Jessica.
So one of my goals with coming into this position was when we went to talk about the budget, I wanted to be able to present it in a new way. For citizens to be able to understand it, but understand it in a relatable sense. So this year for the F Y twenty six budget. We put forward a budget for a shared future, and it really started with the feedback from council on what you wanted to see in terms of. Improvements for the roads, capital planning and public safety. But when we thought about that and we put together this budget. The real focus was on building a desirable community and taking pride in our community. And so the budget requests that you see here. Are encompass all of the departments and improving those services. But we want to explain it in a way to where you feel the budget. It's more than just numbers on a page. And you see the budget in that in that time that you're spending less in traffic because we are investing in road improvements. You see the budget in because you're celebrating your family milestones at our parks and our facilities. Because we've made investments into those spaces, and you're not going to a neighboring community for those types of events. And you see it in improved response ties for response times because we're making that capital investment. For additional fire trucks and police vehicles and additional fire stations and police stations all throughout the community. So this year, the overall goal was a budget for a shared future, and the the cover encompasses all sixteen departments because together. All sixteen departments make that impact in our community. So when talking about the overall budget, this year we wanted to present it from the mindset of home repairs. We all do home repairs and we do it not only because of necessity, but because. We're improving our homes and our quality of life. So in the general fund, the improvements that you're gonna see. Is a little over fifteen million um across. The biggest portion is towards fire because we are making that big impact with four fire trucks. So they're about thirty seven percent of the budget. And then um we also have a significant improvement this year um through city managers' requests, and so you'll see that in the next slide. Of we're trying to plan better and we're trying to not go back to the well during the year, so we are setting aside some contingencies. Overall, capital outlay is about fifty percent of the general fund budget this year, a quarter of it is part of those contingencies. Angelica talked about the reserves, that's gonna be your fleet sinking fund, and then we have twenty one percent towards operating. And there's just one capital project within the general fund, and that is for the police department, and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. So in the mindset of home repairs, you have to be, you have to plan and you have to set aside, but you also have to have accountability um for anything that you're doing. And certain measurable achievements for those. So through the city manager's office, you do have a little over four million dollars in requests that are in this proposed budget. That includes the fleet sinking fund, we are also setting aside um a million dollars towards public safety. Um, fund which is towards land, potentially for new fire stations and the new police headquarters. Um, building a takeback is a set aside or a contingency for the trickle down effect of the police department moving into building B. And then those some of those departments moving over to building E. And building A also having a a domino effect of departments moving, so. We're planning ahead, whatever that domino effect is, we're setting aside funds now to be able to make those moves and not come back and ask for additional funds. In next fiscal year. One thing we've also heard, I believe from Councilman Johnson and a few others, is accountability and op- an operational audit. We've never budgeted a line item for that every year. So moving forward, we do have a line item um proposed in the city manager's office for an operational audit. Going forward. And then a big portion is contingencies for tariffs, emergency requests and negotiations. We will always have emergency situations that come up, you see them come before council, but when they come up, we usually have to go to fund balance to be able to fund those. Our plan this year is to start with a contingency set aside that's already built into the budget. So we're not going back to that well, we're able to address it already within the money we have in the budget. So a roof, a roof repairs, uh there are protection, there are public safety, so for police and fire. They account for fifty two percent of the general fund request this year. The largest portion is for fire because of the four fire trucks that are in the proposed budget. Um, they also had a significant amount of requests related to their I A F F contract. In year two, they have required uniforms in year um for they have certain number per position, so there is a one time. Ask for those to be able to get their stock up to provide that per the contract. Um, on the police side, you do have a significant amount for turnover for replacement vehicles. Besides the three that they had that were totaled this year, there's an additional twenty one replacements as well as a mower. And then there's also an inclusion for another um Terradyne Gurka for their SWAT team. Um, their operating is a smaller amount, they only had um contractual obligations for Axon, their body cameras and teaser program. As they add those new F T Es, they have to expand that program, and that is an annual requirement of that contract. The one project that is in the general fund is the building B hardening for the police department, so as they move over to building B, they do have C G S requirements. For and improvements that have to happen to that building, so that is the one project that you'll see in the general fund. So our next round of home improvements are our parks and facilities, they they take care of all of our facilities and our hands on items. And this year you have a real focus on not only safety improvements um in terms of training and equipment. But also improvements to our facilities. So within our facility repairs and maintenance requests. We wanted to highlight the departments that are gonna see those impacts. For instance, in public works. Fifteen percent of the maintenance repairs that you'll see are safety related items um in our fleet bay. And their facility out at our main station in terms of improving ramps and walkways. We're we're trying to do as much as we can to improve not only the work safety aspect, but also. Um, on the parks and recreation side, we see repairs to rental facilities. Some of our facilities have A C units that don't work or are working beyond repair, and the maintenance of them is higher than getting them replaced. So this year, this budget does make a significant impact into getting some of those items taken care of. You also have a few vehicle replacements for vehicles that are twenty years or older within parks and facilities. Um, we do have one request that'll end up being a transfer to the building fund with the building department moving over. They have a portable generator. That the parks and facilities can purchase, um, and that can be used during declared emergencies. It's a portable one that we we know. That we can utilize and we get better value by keeping it within the city than sending it out to surplus. And then again, we talked a little bit about safety training, parks and facilities has some additional training that they want to bring onsite. That helps us improve our workmen's comp and risk, um, reducing our chance for risk. And then you'll also see in public works is next, they have safety equipment as well. It's all a focus on. Improving that for all of our employees as well as some of our facilities. So overall, in public works, it's a little over one point three million in improvements, most of theirs um come from operating. Um, the biggest portion is the re spans, they have current projects that they're looking to add funding to and also establish an annual program for doing them. And there's also additional outside services that they're really looking to bring on board and get fund um in within their operating budget. Engineering services is a big one, they've seen that impact especially with their engineer position being vacant. They're having to utilize the services more and more, but it's not something that they have actively built into their budget. Um, they also have a mowing contract that has an increased cost, and they're looking to take uh tree trimming services also outside. They do have a couple of capital outlay improvements, including a tractor and a bush hog, and then a few vehicles for their work crews that go out. Um, one item that is on here is their technology efficiency upgrades. They did have a request related to a Myo Vision, which was a a specific item for their traffic ops division. Um, so there is a budget request built in for that item, but we left it open with a caveat if they also want to improve their faster system. Because we've talked a lot about changing the way we look at our capital assets in the lifespan, and if we wanted to get more out of our faster system. We wanted to have that funding available for them to purchase additional modules if needed. So for all of our other departments within the general fund, we have a few that had smaller amounts of requests, they amounted to less than five percent of the general fund budget. But we did want to touch on them. So I T is our hub, we all know if the power goes out, we can't really do much, and when the servers go out, we can't do anything until I T helps us. Get everything back up and running. So for them, the projects that they have this year is they do have an edge switch upgrade, which is a citywide project. So the general fund portion of this project is be being proposed for the I T budget as well as the R R P renewal. For your H R legislative and finance departments, you had some minor requests related to a reclass of an admin secretary. The audience chairs for the council chambers, um, we had advanced training within the finance department, and then also an increment to recruitment supplies for H R. And then for our recreation department, um, they had their A A B staffing, which they come forward every year for. What they're doing different this year is they have asked for these funds to be reoccurring. So that moving forward, they're able to plan for those seasonal staffing positions already within their operating budget. And then they had us minor request for increased costs for chemical supplies. So when all of our enterprise and other funds, um, this is the breakdown, our largest percentage is of course the go road bond at about forty nine percent. Um, utilities makes up about thirty four percent of the other ones with the large portion being their capital funds. What you don't see in here and what we know has come up before are the impact fee related requests. So we do not adopt them through the budget process, but we did want to highlight that in October, these departments will be coming back. You'll be seeing a request from the police department for their new headquarters, this will be their initial pre-engineering funding. You'll see from parks and facilities, they're asking for a parks administration building, and then of course from the transportation impact fees, you'll see. There's two ongoing projects where they're asking for additional funds, but then there are also going to be for sidewalk projects for each of the four zip code areas. For a total of two million dollars. So our building fund is one of our enterprise funds, their requests this year were related to the edge switch. They have a nine thousand dollar portion of that overall project that you'll see. At this week's council meeting, you'll be seeing a contract come forward for construction debris removal. They were looking to add about five hundred thousand dollars annually in their budget moving forward, so that's something you'll see go into there. The last portion of building E related to their move into that building of the conference room, so there is a small request related to fulfilling that portion of. Their move into the new building. And then they did have a reclass to um that it actually ends up being a nineteen thousand dollar savings. Because of the vacancy to the new position is a savings due to salary. One item that you'll note on here is the building E onboarding costs for janitorial services, the electrical service, the elevator maintenance. Um, there is a fifty one thousand dollar portion of that that'll be paid by the building portion that you'll see in the approved budget. The original request that came from parks and facilities is listed in the budget book for a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars total. But only ninety five thousand dollars is actually a part of the general fund. The other parts are covered by building and utilities. For our stormwater, um, their overall total amount was six million dollars. A big part of that is they're doing their cured and placed pipes, which was two million dollars. They do have a couple of large capital outlay items that they were requesting, a new Kaiser S eight and two uh trucks. For their their crews, and then you're also gonna see a significant um ask for their different projects. So they have two ongoing projects, one in Driscoll Heights and one for a pond improvement um at Cadillac and R J Collin. And then they have three culvert replacements that they're looking to fund in F Y twenty six. Utilities fund has just under nineteen million dollars across all their funds for requests, the biggest portion is thirteen million dollars in projects. Um, the utilities operating fund accounts for the sections that you see in blue, and their largest uh portion will be. Related to their projects or their capital outlay. They have several vehicles related to adding additional crew trucks. And equipment, um, including a bore machine that they're looking to improve the functions and the services that they can provide in-house versus going out. For services. They do have an increase um to their operating, some of that operating is for adding in C D L training. For technology upgrades, but they're also establishing pro annual replacement programs within their operating budget. Um, these are realm rehabilitations, water valve replacements, fire hydrant replacements, and. Meter replacements. These were all items that previously were reported as projects, but because they don't meet the capital threshold. We moved them over to the operating budget and we're calling them programs and bringing forth showing that there's an annual program being funded. It also gives the department a little bit more leeway year to year, that if they have a bigger need in one, they have that flexibility within their own budget. To set what the priority for that year will be. Last but not least, we have our road uh road funds, um, the biggest portion again is the go roads bond, which is twenty eight million dollars. We do have three million dollars towards road maintenance. All of the go road bond projects are currently open projects. And these are additional funds for those current projects that you see before you.
Right, so um this will be sort of the last section that we'll go into. Um, so essentially all the budget workshops and all the planning um takes us to the taxable value. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and um review some of the slides that we've presented to you in the previous budget workshops, just for transparency purposes. Um, we're gonna go and review um tax bill impacts and uh the breakdown samples. Um, we between the general fund ad valorem taxation rate and your debt service tax rate. Um, again, we'll talk about the geo bond debt mileage, and then um we'll end it with the dollar split image. Um, which I know Councilman Johnson always likes to see, so we like we like to include that in there. Um, this slide should look familiar to you. Um, so this is presented at every budget workshop to sort of. Give an idea of um the tax rates and how we set them and how it compares to the current fiscal year. Um, what I have done is normally you'll see the three percent cap rate highlighted as um per charter. That is how we sort of start preparing the budget. Um, but because at the last council workshop, we have been given direction to go ahead and build the proposed budget. On the currently maintained rate of the six point seven three three nine, I did highlight that. Um, so again, it's a um recapulation of the total revenue that is projected to be generated. Based on that six point seven three three nine maintained rate from the current year. Um, it does show an increased uh revenue from the current fiscal year, which is the nine point three million. Um, please know that how um i- it sort of works is that we um per the three percent char- charter cap. Um, all new construction that was added to the tax rule is exempt from the three percent cap rule. Um, so a lot of the revenue um that you see with increasing at any rate that you set sort of impacts that. And of course, these are based on taxable values. So generally, as taxable values on your home increases as a homeowner. Or a property owner in um in Palm Bay, um, you will see that that revenue increase. Just because there is a a usually a tax increase if that that were to happen. Um, so this again is for disclosure purposes, it's similar to the last one um that we provided. Um, one thing that I will disclose that I have seen, um, there is a projection, um, is a trajectory. Of new construction or new taxable value is decreasing. It is still large, um, for fiscal year twenty six, we have about six hundred and nineteen million. Of new taxable value that was added to the tax rule, however, that is a decrease from the previous year of the six hundred and ninety one million. So it just shows you that in previous years, we've kind of increased and taken a big jump, which has helped us. Um, so to keep that three percent cap or that that revenue even even levying a three percent cap higher, just because that new taxable value is exempt. However, we do see that trajectory of things slowing down and that new t- new taxable value is decreasing. So if you were to go into um the budget season with a three percent cap rate, you your taxable revenue or ad valorem taxation. That you do generate um will decrease just because you don't have that driving factor of the higher revenue. Um, from that new taxable value because it's decreasing slightly. Um, please note that after that first year, that entire amount is now subjected to the three percent cap per our charter. Um, the next slide, same information, looks at it slightly different. Um, so please put your eyes on that first line as that is what the budget has been built on. Um, if we were to go ahead and adopt a budget at the rollback rate or the three percent cap rate. Um, that fourth column from the left from a reduction in available um fiscal year twenty six revenue is the amount that would need to be cut. Um, so if you were to go ahead and go into September, um, deciding differently other than the six point seven three three nine. Then um if you were to maintain a cap rate, for example, we would have to remove see three point six million dollars. From the requests that Jessica just reviewed. Um, please note that um per Florida statutes, there are um limits on how much we can increase our tax rates. Um, so I always disclose that just because um, you know, we don't want our property owners and our taxpayers to think that. You know, if we go into one year, we can just increase it by however how much we want. Um, that is not how these calculations work, that actually per Florida law, um, based on the previous year's. Ad- adopted tax rate and how it's voted and how much values are. Based on the previous year's adopted tax rate and how it's voted and how much values are. Our taxable values in the county are or in the city districts are. It sets a certain rate that we can essentially adopt based on the number of people that vote that sit on the dais. So I always disclose that, that based on certain adjustable rates. We would be able to actually go into the year at a majority maximum vote of six point eight nine six two. And a maximum rate of a two thirds vote of seven point two oh seven two. So just when we're talking about two thirds of five, you really would have that majority maximum vote. So we could not come to you and say, hey, in fiscal year twenty six, we want to go ahead and propose a rate of eight mils or eight point zero 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 zero. Because legally, we're not allowed to do that. As the years continue and you continue to lower the rate. My expectation would be is that those rate rates reduce at that same rate. So it's essentially just the law caps any taxing authority on how much they're able to actually increase the rate for the following year. This is a great slide that I always like to include as it kind of shows our twenty year history. Of where the city of Palm Bay sort of has been as far as our property evaluations and the rates that we're. You know, levied against those and how much revenues we took in. So for the next few years, you'll still continue to see that in twenty thirteen. Is really when we took that deep decline and that's that where the city sort of bottomed out. Where our taxable value at that time was two point six billion dollars. But there's a huge decline and we really did not come out of that until about twenty twenty two. So when you're thinking, you know, eight, nine, ten years really over that course of that period, that's how long it took. The city to come back out of that five year decline on when we had those property values truly decline here in the state of Florida. I also started including in two thousand and sixteen, sort of the rates that we're setting. The line in the gray will either be your proposed or your adopted budget. The line in the orange color is your three percent cap, which didn't go into effect until twenty eighteen. But I sort of showed the two years prior. And then the line in the yellow will actually be your rollback rate. This is the official first year in fiscal year twenty six where your three percent cap is below the rollback. I've been, we've I've seen it coming for some time. I wasn't expecting it to be in twenty six, however, because the C R A is no longer active. And that was sort of our buffer that we had the B C R A, which was part of our taxation. But we really had to send money there, so that was sort of that buffer, that safeguard that sort of allowed us to still kind of stay afloat. However, that has sunsetted and we're no longer able to use that as a buffer. So after I spoke with the Department of Revenue in the state, they made adjustments to the form. And that is what officially drove the three percent cap below the rollback rate. Again, I went ahead and kept the six point seven three three nine, showing that we did not. We're not proposing to increase the rate that we're simply maintaining as the current year that we've adopted. Again, tax bill impact, this is just for informational purposes, I bring this to you at every workshop. I did adjust the property evaluations based on Councilman Johnson's suggestion at the last workshop. So we did kind of increase that to three hundred thousand. So this kind of just gives an idea of what an annual cost. For the city of Palm base portion of the tax bill would look like based on property evaluations amount. Please note that it is on the taxable non-school amount that is assessed. So if your home is worth five hundred thousand hypothetically or four hundred thousand, you're not taxed on that entire amount. It's really after all those exemptions and our Savior homes and all of that is applied, that is what you're taxed on. So sort of falls into various sort of lines is where that could be. So it's really just for informational purposes to show what the annual cost variance would be. And then also in the bottom section, the impact that those changes to a tax bill have as a totality to the city. This is a great slide, this was presented to you at the last budget workshop and I kind of just took it. Cleaned it up a little bit and combined some things. But it's essentially how does the mileage rate impact your annual property tax bill and the city of Palm Bay? So remember, your entire tax bill is not, does not come to the city of Palm Bay, it's really roughly maybe about a third or so. It depends on the actual property valuation. So it's a comparison from this year to the proposed next year. So let's look at a taxable value home of the three hundred thousand dollars. Where current in the current year, we do have two tax rates. So we have our regular ad valorem general fund taxation rates and then we have a debt levy. Which is for the three geo bond draws that were voter approved that we took out. So when we're looking at the current year for a home hypothetically for a taxable value at the six point seven three three nine. And a tax debt levy rate of one point one two one oh. You are looking at a total tax impact of roughly about two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So that would be the taxable portion to the city of Palm Bay. Now, in the state of Florida, we have a great thing called that save your homes. So save your homes is is a sort of that tax exemption or it's applied to your property values. Meaning that your property values cannot increase more than three percent of what you're taxed on. So essentially, the state, a homeowner or property owner already has a three percent safeguard. And we're just adding an additional cap on top of that. So taxable value in this case is a little bit less than three percent increase. So let's say that taxable values, no matter how much your home is increasing in value. Your taxable value is only increasing roughly about that that's six thousand dollars, right? So your total value of your home may increase by ten. But remember, you're not taxed on all of that, you're only taxed on what that taxable value actually is. So we're going to go ahead and carry that six point seven three three nine rate, apply that to the new value. And based on that, the total tax bill impact on an annual basis would be forty two dollars and seventy one cents. So that would be on the new hypothetical valuation increase of your home, maintaining the rate. We're looking at forty two dollars a year. Now, we do have a debt levy tax. The nice thing about the debt levy taxes is that all three bonds draws are now encumbered under that debt levy. So as as your taxable value in the city increases and you're adding more homes, you're adding more property, commercial, all of that. And your principal and interest payments aren't increasing anymore because you've already done the draws, so we're not adding more debt. That rate will continue to go down, right? Because we have to cover in totality ten million and if you're spreading ten million out over more people. People are paying less on an annual basis. So the new rate for next year is calculated at the zero point nine 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 three. That is a set rate because we truly just look at the total valuation and what we have to generate in order to pay that principal and interest payment. So property tax bills on that end, for in this scenario, while taxable value on your home is going up. Your bill portion is actually decreasing. So on that side, the expected or anticipated reduction on that tax bill is thirty dollars and seventeen cents. So when you're looking at the net impact of one increasing by forty two dollars and the other going down by thirty. You're looking at a total tax revenue the city is generating of twelve dollars and fifty four cents a year. So it's a little more than a dollar a month. So again, this talks about our Savior homes and save our homes, Savior homes. A lot of property owners may not be aware of that, but that is really that that additional homestead exemption that is added to. For the property, property owners, commercial or residential. On the bottom, we look at again that variance. This is what I just spoke about in the previous slide, that we are maintaining our current rate of the six point threat seven three three nine. We are generating sixty seven point roughly about two million dollars. And if we were to revert to the three percent cap, we would have to cut roughly about three point seven million dollars. In projected revenue, meaning that on those requests Jessica did talk about, there will have to be reductions on that. Another slide that I frequently add is tax bill breakdown. This is just to make our community and our property owners aware. That your tax bill has a lot on it. So out of that tax bill, it varies for everyone, but roughly about a third. Goes to the city of Palm Bay and everything else does go to other entities. So you do have Provence County that taxes on multiple types of levies. You have the school board that taxes and those all do not come to the city of Palm Bay. So we just put that out there so that way our community is aware. That when they do receive the tax bill and they see that bottom total amount, that is not all Palm Bay revenue that is generated. It does go to various entities that are taxed separately and we have no control over those. Just putting it out there again, this is our historical tax bill analysis. This is the Savior Savior homes, really showing that even though that that market value is increasing. On the taxable value side, there are exemptions put in place. Where that taxable amount on that assessed value is only increasing by three percent. So that's a great way for people to kind of understand. That when you get your tax bill or you're looking at your market value, you're not taxed on the market value. You're really a lot of exemptions that are already put in place to sort of restrict that value that you're you're taxed on. And on top of that, not all that that taxable amount that you're paying goes to the city of Palm Bay. So there's many safeguards that are already put in place outside of the cap that the city has. In addition to all those other exemptions. Again, our geo bond debt military. Again, I'll just like I just said, this is that comparison from that one point one two one zero. It is reducing to the zero point nine 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 three. So what I do is is I essentially look at the total taxable value for the city that is projected to increase in future years. And we have roughly about ten million in principal and interest payments amongst the three bonds that are voter approved that we have to pay. This is a debt service that you have to pay. However, all three draws are under already under that rate. I believe fiscal year twenty five was the the current year that we're in was the first year, all three were collected. So fiscal year twenty four, from twenty four to twenty five, you saw a jump because we had that additional debt that we had to pay. But now all three are accounted for, so unless there's any other future changes, which is out of my realm. But if that continues to be as taxable value increases, you're simply just spreading that liability. Across multiple individuals versus it's just like anything, right? So I I project that rate to continuously go down, which should reflect tax savings for for those individuals in the future. I know this is one of Councilman Johnson's favorite slides. So we do do the dollar split, so that essentially means out of every dollar revenue that is generated in the general fund. This is the split on the departments that receive that cent on the dollar. I know our city attorney's office are less than a penny, they operate the risk management fund. Which they're primarily housed under that internal service fund, so they don't have a large presence in the general fund. However, it just means that, for example, you know, for two cents on the dollar, we have growth management and recreation. So for every dollar that is generated for the city, two cents on that goes to growth management and two cents goes to recreation. So that's kind of the idea of of what this looks like. This is the first year, it's a little bit of a different split at the bigger end. This is the first year wherein the general fund fire will be taking the largest portion of that. So for every dollar that is generated for the city in revenue, twenty eight cents on that dollar goes towards. Our fire department and twenty seven cents on the dollar goes to police. So we're looking at more than sixty cents on the dollar is dedicated to our public service departments. Which operates, you know, their personnel costs, their operating and any capital needs. Some important upcoming dates. So we did have our first public hearing, we had a little bit of an issue. Initially, it was to be scheduled on September tenth, which is a Wednesday. I went and filed all the paperwork on July twenty second, after everything was approved. And that is when the county had a meeting in the morning, the county commissioners had a meeting in the morning. After I filed all my paperwork and they changed one of their dates to July tenth. Legally, we are not allowed to host our meeting on the same day as the school board or the county commissioners. If we were to have moved ahead with the September tenth, we would have been in violation of Florida statute, so we had to do some shuffling around. Monday, September eighth was the only availability between the entire week's calendar. Staying within statutes and and coordinating with our city council. So that has officially been filed. So our first public hearing to officially adopt the budget will be September eighth at six P M. We will do our advertisement as previously mentioned on September nineteenth, that is a Florida statute requirement. And the second public hearing will happen on September twenty fourth, which is a Wednesday at six P M. So those are already set, so those are already on the calendar. So that is when we will officially approve our budget. So I would like to open it up to questions, comments and discussions. And goals for today. If you know me, I'm I we're very much a planning planning group. We've spent a lot of time and dedication over the last eight months, working with departments, working with several city managers. I feel like I feel like we've put together a a great product with a lot of help. With my amazing team, which I would not be here without them, with all the department heads and with your help. I know my goal, and that is my goal for today, I've I've been doing this for about ten years. Is to walk away tonight with a good idea on what the rate we are going into adopt with in September. Mainly because it's becomes a statutory item, once we kind of go into the public hearing and the adoption process. We want to feel confident going into those hearing dates and knowing what our proposed budget looks like.
Well, thank you ma'am, I wanted to just take a moment to thank each and every one of you for the hard work. This this was definitely labor intensive on your part. I know Mr. Morton had a lot to do with that as well. But I'll open it up for questions from council at this time. Any question, no, I got that, just relax. Any questions from this presentation? Mister, do you have, do you have question?
Question, carry on. Okay, first one, if we do follow the cap, what do you suspect will be taken out?
So I would defer to our city manager, Mr. Morton. What I can show is that we are looking at, if you're going to the three percent cap. Which is a six point three six five eight. The total amount that would need to be cut is three point six, three point seven million dollars rounded up. So that will be a question for our city manager, we really go by his guidance on what he sees fit to be able to cut.
I think I think preliminarily when we've looked at what could sustain to be cut back to that rate would probably be. The outright purchase of the two fire trucks instead of, you know, trying to do four, we'd do two. And then cutting some of the current operational. I wouldn't want to go away from either the contingency reserve or the future police fund reserve. Or the allocation for public safety lands acquisition, just because we know those are really big liabilities going forward. And we have to start putting a marker in the ground and and creating funds and seeding those funds to accomplish those goals long term. So probably some operational deferred maintenance. And at least, you know, trim it back to two fire trucks and try to come back for two more next year or or however that could roll into the budget.
Okay, secondly, the construction debris removal, is that taking out the abandoned buildings and stuff around Palm Bay?
So there's a list, I believe of, I saw today of fifteen or sixteen properties that would be ceded from the building enterprise fund. And if they fail to seek compliance, ultimately, we'd enforce the Florida building code. And if they fail to seek compliance, ultimately we'd enforce the Florida Building Code and correct, remove derelict structures that are without a permit. John Pearson, I'm sure he can speak more directly to that. But when you're out of co-compliance, you have no activity on your permit, you've passed the window, would allow us to start authorizing the contractor, which is going to be on the agenda this week to discuss, to demolish those buildings and remove them.
Yeah, Councilman Hammer, I think that's setting up for following you. What you're talking about is the direct impact on what we've been asking with that, what is it, pine, pine wood or pine tree down that corridor? We'll, we'll be seeing that, that's on the agenda toward Thursday.
And just, just to note, I know that that is in an enterprise fund. It's in the building fund, so it has no impact on the out of alarm taxation.
Okay. And my last one is if we do go ahead and follow maintaining the military rate the same, is there a guarantee we can get that that funding goes to the fire trucks?
We have an approval letter from Sutfin and we have to act on it, which we'll have time to act on it within the conditions of the letter that included both the price reduction and yes, the, the preliminary agreement that they will take the, the debt reduction and the three years payment on the roll up engine. So we will be doing the cost savings plus having the opportunity on the second to, to fund it over a three year strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, have any additional questions, sir? Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Morton, can the new Public Works Director come up and talk about the Kaiser?
Yes, he can. In fact, we talked about today, Kevin Brinkley. Welcome to the city of Palm Bay on your first day. He's got, he's got experience with these and.
So I understand you have some, some awesome ideas and he also would like to share his experiences with you on.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you much, thank you. Mayor, council? Yes, the Kaiser S A Gator. So it is a new request this year. It would be an addition to the fleet and it is a unique piece of equipment. If you're interested in looking up, looking it up on your own, you can Google walking excavator. You'll find pictures of them on mountain sites all across Europe. Basically, they took something that is used to traverse mountains in Europe, do it on a construction type work and redesigned it to be able to go into the ditches in Florida. They found a purpose for it here. Essentially, it can go places where you can't take a normal piece of equipment. Can't take a normal truck or anything like that. Has legs that move independently, so you can kind of crawl it into and out of canals. And it is a piece of equipment that would essentially replace over time work that we are currently outsourcing to a third party. So cost of the equipment is between six and seven hundred thousand from what I briefly gathered today. I believe we're outsourcing close to five hundred thousand annually. So that's the financial side of it. The operation side of it is you will get mixed reviews everywhere you go. They are not cheap to purchase and they're not easy to keep running because of the nature of the work. That is why it's so expensive to outsource it basically because somebody has to keep them running and someone has to do that kind of work and pay the operators. So what we did, we just purchased one a few years ago in New Smyrna Beach. We took up volunteers from our current equipment operator staff who wants to learn this piece of equipment, created two, two man crews that would, one would be a spotter and the other would be training on it. We trained them in our city owned properties first and then now we're gradually working them out into some of the easier areas to access with the idea that we eventually could ramp all the way up. Hopefully that addressed the question.
Yeah, so my, I'm glad you explained all that. Welcome aboard. Look forward to getting to you more. I, I've heard mixed reviews about them as well. I know they're costly to purchase and then the maintenance. I did a tour with Public Works and, you know, I could see the challenges that we're up against in maintaining these canals with right away typically only on one side. So I was worried about, and what are the costs, the maintenance? Do we have the operator for it? And then I did a tour of Melvertown Canal. You know, those guys, you know, they, they were kind of dogging the machines about the cost and the maintenance. And I know the county owns one in West Melvert. Historically, they hire the county for, for their Kaiser. So I just, I wanted to like a one fuzzy from you that like this is a smart economical purchase. You know, like proof of concept, sounds like you, you have experience with it in New Smyrna. So I really just wanted to know, like, is this a smart purchase?
It makes sense, day one analysis, ten thousand foot view. Yes, it makes sense to kind of dig into it a little bit further and continue to evaluate while maintaining it in the budget. I definitely want to see what company that's we're outsourcing with and what equipment they're using. I'd like to get a look at what Melvert's open and I'm sure some of our neighbors here in Brevard County have something similar. So what are they using? It's what we did in Volusia County. We looked around and found our neighbors, what equipment are you using? There are really only two major manufacturers. There's either Menzy or Kaiser. Most that we interviewed were, if they worked with Menzy, they were transitioning to Kaiser because it was a little bit better developed piece of equipment and parts seemed to be more readily available. But this is, you know, a large moving apparatus. Look at a fire truck or anything like that, they're with all the moving parts and expensive parts. Everyone's going to complain, keep them running. But one of the first questions I asked was, well, who's currently doing the job and how much do we pay? And so we're currently paying a pretty sizable amount. You know, one year's price of that contract would be the purchase price of the vehicle. So over time, I, I think it would be, it would be fairly easy to get break even.
You, I'm sure you won't be interested now, but it's like, how much are we paying the subcontractor for how many miles? And how many miles can we subperform? And I know you probably don't know the answer right now. Is there a way to, with council's consensus, like earmark it, have it approved in the budget, but bring back proof of concept and analysis for us to authorize the purchase at that time?
Mr. Morton?
I'm trying to get my mic on you, sir. So yeah, Deputy Mayor, you know, you, you've really given us some great insights in this budget and, and some recent financial transactions. We appreciate. And from our conversation, I liked that approach and talked with the new director this morning that, yeah, if we could earmark it, definitely come back before the equipment's purchased. Let, let Mr. Brinkley dig into local experiential relevance based off the knowledge he also has in New Smyrna. Let's talk with our local partners, proof of concept, proof of budget, proof of operations, and bring it back before we purchase the equipment. And, and I think, you know, leaving it for now, if we decide to yank it, wonderful. But to your point, yes, sir, I think we should bring back proof of concept just to make sure council and community is comfortable with, with the purchase.
Cool. Thank you. Mr. Morton, slide twenty one. Just want to look at year over year, specifically fiscal year and estimates for its proposed budget related to information technology and community and economic development. Your estimates, R T's just shy of seven million and I T's pushing well, well north of nine million. Want to understand what the, what, why the jump there in the same league with community economic development? What's the, what's the delta difference? You know, we, we roughly increased our revenue or projected revenue fifteen percent. And those expenses are north of twenty, twenty five percent. So just trying to understand how we landed there.
So maybe this is something that I can add. So like I mentioned, is that we've sort of changed how we did our budgeting for fiscal year twenty six and adopting versus the, the previous year where we included any unspent funds on projects and P O's in the approved budget already. And so that is where you'll see when you're looking at the adopted budget for let's say I T, the six point three million versus the nine point two adopted to the proposed, because that will include any balances on any projects that they are carrying. So that has already been built into the budget. So that is why within your year and estimates, you'll see that, that decline, right? So they have a nine point three million of an amended budget because that for the current fiscal year, that includes all P O's, projects, anything in a full budget. But they only plan on spending six point nine million of that. So that variance of roughly two and a half million is being carried forward in the proposed budget to pay for any balances on those projects and any open P O's that still have to be paid. That's the concept.
It was really a concept and attempt to true up and show the true cost of operations instead of, you know, piecemealing it, so.
And then E R P system is your largest.
Okay. And slide twenty two, I just really want to focus on the personal expenses from just fiscal year twenty two to, to like where we're at today. It's, I mean, I know you're new, Mr. Morton, but since twenty twenty two, we're looking at a forty percent increase in payroll pension. Like to dive into that as, as you progress your career here in Palm Bay and, you know, figure out, do we have the right balance of, of everything? You know, without sacrificing quality life and services to our residents. And one thing, you know, I just kind of caught tonight is I don't think we're doing enough for our road maintenance fund. I know there can't, not much can be done on that now, but I think we need to get hyper aggressive on, on funding that in the future, fiscal year twenty seven and, and the next budget season. That concludes my comments, ma'am.
Thank you. And I think council, previous councils have been echoing your sentiments with increasing our road maintenance fund. So, Mr. Morton, you have to, you have additional presentation moving forward right now?
Ishan presenting the capital.
Yeah, so unless we want to finish this section first or if you want to see the capital, it's, it's really up to how you want.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I'd like to conclude everything, open up for public comments and then have council discuss.
Thank you. Hello. Just make sure it works. All right. Thank you.
Not, not me, buddy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Spillers. I'm the Capital and Asset Program Administrator and I'm going to go over the proposed capital budget for F Y twenty six. I think this will clean up a lot of answers that you all have and be able to see what's going on moving forward. So what I'm going to go over tonight is the current projects and proposed funding. So projects that are already going on. Some proposed capital funding for new stuff, for the new enterprise and the new general fund stuff is being funded or being proposed. And then to go over the total funding, so we see what our actual budget for F Y twenty six is going to be. So this is current projects right now. So from F Y twenty five, we are going to be pulling forward this balance for F Y twenty six. So you can see right now, as of right now, we have a hundred and three million, almost a hundred and four million citywide and it's broken up by department right there. And then we have the proposed budget of what we're adding to already existing projects. So this is nothing new. This is already existing projects that are moving forward. We're just adding some for the go bonds and we're adding some for public works, stormwater, which is an enterprise fund. Here it is broken up by revenue source. You see that the general fund for this year for existing projects is fully funded. We don't need any more. So building as well, stormwater, we need that four hundred and forty thousand and then the go bonds for Public Works Department. Now we're going into proposed new funding. This is for the enterprise funds. We have a total of seventeen point six million going for capital improvements. And then we have two point six for capital outlay. And you'll see the, the bar, the pie graph right there showing that. The next one is going to be the general fund. So this is what we have proposed for the general fund in new stuff. So we have four hundred and fifty thousand proposed for capital improvements and then we have seven point five for capital outlay. So this is the total funding right here. So this is everything, the balance forward and everything proposed. So we're looking to add fifty six million in our proposed budget to all of our departments on top of the hundred and four million roughly to total a hundred and sixty million to be used in F Y twenty six. This is something that council has not previously seen because most of the time we just budget for new dollars. So now you guys see what's moving forward as well. And this is just how to do it by a funding source or a revenue source. The general fund is adding seven point nine. So it's going from eleven point eight to almost twenty. Buildings only adding a hundred and eleven. Stormwater is adding five point eight. Utilities is adding fourteen point seven. And then of course, the go bonds is the largest amount. And over there, you'll see it broken down by revenue source, utilities being the largest one, and that's going to be for F Y twenty six. This one is also a really good one I like to do. This is the general fund only and this is general fund only dollars. So this is not any grants that we have. This is nothing but the general fund dollars. So we see that fire is the largest amount with a little bit over fourteen million. We have I T also going neck and neck with police right now. And then we have parks and facilities and public works after. And I always like to do this. This is kind of an accounting thing. This is how we usually present on our Act for and it shows you where everything is going to, general fund only dollars. So we see that the largest one is public safety, followed by I T and then transport, transportation, which is public works. And then physical environment is like parks, basketball courts, et cetera, et cetera. And that's kind of the high level view of what we have proposed for the F Y twenty six budget. Thank you.
Council, any questions? Thank you. Mr. Morton, does that conclude the presentation?
That concludes our presentation, thank you.
I'll stand at this time, I'd like to get the public's comments, public's input. Anyone wish to speak? Raise your hand, please step forward, sir.
Lance Fishland, Department of Florida. One of the best kept secrets in the Palm Bay Police Department is that lieutenants and command staff members are allowed to use their city vehicles for personal use. It's so coveted that for three union contracts over nine years, F O P refused to change their ranks of majors to commanders just to avoid the potential scrutiny. They are authorized to drive their police vehicles through adjoining counties from Brevard. This would include county lines of Flagler, St. Lucie County, Polk County, Lake County. That's three hundred and fifty nine miles of potential roadways. The policy further allows family members to ride in their vehicles. In a conversation on or around May eighth of twenty twenty four with your city attorney, she indicates she was against meeting employees using city vehicles for personal use. As the Director of Risk Management Program, she indicated that having family members transported in city vehicles added unnecessary liability to the city in case of the crashes. With multiple pending lawsuits against the city, taxpayers shouldn't be burdened with unnecessary risk of potential civil cases against the city. During my tenure, we had command staff members use their police vehicles for vacations to Disney, daily kids soccer practices in Orlando and one command staff member who each day dropped their kid off at school at nine and then left at three thirty to take them to softball practice. Palm Bay citizens should not be responsible for filling up command staff vehicles to go on vacation and athletic practices. The policy was so broad that multiple command staff members didn't even own a personal vehicle. They simply used their assigned vehicles, their assigned police vehicles. With a current salaries of a hundred and thirty five to a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year per your website, they should be able to afford a personal car and gas. Chief Aggelo will tell you that it's so they can respond to emergencies from anywhere in the eligible three hundred and fifty nine miles of roadway. In almost all cases, command staff members would drive home, grab a uniform and equipment prior to going to the scene. In a worst case scenario, the city has a mileage reimbursement policy anytime an employee is required to use their personal vehicle for work. If lieutenants and above use one tank of gas a week for personal use, it would cost the taxpayers on most conservative estimates forty five thousand dollars a year. City hall overtime costs the taxpayers over a hundred thousand dollars a year. In the two thousand and four, the two thousand twenty four stats, a one year police sergeant who consistently works this detail is the twenty fourth highest paid city employee, making over a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars a year. Four times Chief Aggelo has filled these very council chambers with on duty SWAT and police officers, the last one being on July third, to attend my presentation to council. This show of force has cost the taxpayers over eleven thousand dollars in unnecessary spending. Each year, these same SWAT members travel to Orlando to participate in SWAT roundup. Between the week of training leading up to the roundup and the weeks spent in Orlando, taxpayers are on a hook for over twenty one thousand dollars just in the salaries. Due to the time of the, due to the time of the event in past years, these officers were paid time and a half of holiday pay and one time they were given holiday or hurricane emergency pay. These four budgetary changes can save the city over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. These monies should be used to purchase body cameras for our command staff members so they can be held accountable like their officers. Lastly, these saved monies can be used to purchase online reporting software to assist officers and reduce responses, responses to minor incidents, therefore saving salary money.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Step forward, please.
Bill Vatten, five eighty six Mission Spray Street, Southwest. First, I'd like to welcome the new Public Works Director. Welcome aboard. Glad to see you. Since we have a new Public Works Director, it'd really be nice if we could somehow find a new city engineer. A city engineer, instead of having to pay outsourced, we'd have our own instead of paying the people to say, here, here's my plans. Look at my plans. We're paying their engineers to look at our own drawings. It doesn't make sense to me. So let's see if we can find a city engineer to coincide with our new Public Works Director. And you guys have. And you guys have a budget there? I'm looking at the size of that. It's a lot bigger than what I saw online. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, council. Now it's up to, it's our discussion. Who would like to begin the discussion? Councilman Land judge?
Sure, I don't have much. Um, just, I, I'm at the, the same point I was at the last budget workshop. And, you know, first I would like to start by just echoing everybody. I think our finance department did a great job. Uh, Mr. Morton did a great job and, and all of the, uh, directors and the staff that had to participate in this budget process, you're doing a great job. Uh, so I, I like where we're going. And like I said previously, I think the, the best thing that we can do right now in the middle of the budget cycle is just keep miller rates the same, um, and, and allow our new city manager to do what needs to be done and then come back next budget season and, and buckle down when we can. But I think it's been a great presentation and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hammer?
Yes, I do want to say thank you for all, all your hard work and all your effort into this. It really is a lot. Um, me myself, I, I, I would like to see the three percent be maintained. I would love to see that. But I'm on the backside of, we need fire trucks and we have ISO rating of ten in some places. And I can't sit well at night knowing that safety can be provided in for a dollar. That's something I'm definitely going to have to think about when it come to September. And, um, I would really like to see something come ahead to where we can maintain this and get everything that we need. But, um, I am going to be for fire trucks. So that's, as, as long, I mean, I, I, I need a guarantee if it goes to fire trucks. Um, I know a lot of times we do things throughout the year and then at the end of the year, it's, hey, we need fire trucks. Uh, uh, you know, this is something that needs to be a priority. And for the next three years, I'm going to be on, on getting our miller rate down. I mean, our city manager's been here for two months, almost three months. Um, he's, he is over his head with everything that he's left with. And I, I, I truly want to see, um, what he can do with this. And I would like to see the three, you know, the three percent being maintained. But, um, I don't want to see fire trucks go away.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Again, you guys did a phenomenal job tonight. I know you challenged you in the meetings, I challenged you a lot just over the course of the last few months. I think Mr. Morton's doing a fantastic job and, and told the directors that, you know, and put in their, their time and, and, uh, energy and their expertise into this process and then, you know, making the sacrifices, where you had to for the benefit of the whole city to, you know, to get to where we're at today. I'm, I'm in support of maintaining the, the miller rate and, um, seeing what staff and Mr. Morton could do throughout this year just to prepare us even better and stronger for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I, I'm going to start by just sharing with our new Public Works Director. You have been much coveted, young man. We have, uh, needed and wanted someone to lead on Public Works Department, uh, and with your capacity. So welcome aboard. Uh, we're grateful that you did come and you've been engaging even long before your start date. Uh, and as one of our constituents elegantly stated about an engineer, I think he's going to be pleased on the direction that this Public Works Department is going in with your expertise. We're really grateful for all the time that you've already spent with our team coming down, even when we had a loss of life. That's built camaraderie and built a great team, sir. So I commend you for that thus far. Welcome aboard. Uh, my, my stance doesn't change. Uh, as most of you know, I, I say that I wanted to maintain because public safety is paramount and to, to gather, uh, and mostly you know, I, I've been speaking this way for years. I, I don't change, but mostly also know that I've been a big proponent of operational budget budgets. I've spoken about that for years. Um, I called it a forensic audit. I've called it different, different names, but I, I also said an IG. And I got to tell you, a lot of the citizens were rah rah and, and supportive of that. I understand that the decisions we make here today affect us not only next year, but years to come. And I, I say that because we've done a great job in bringing public safety to where it was. If you saw the graph that rolled up the property, uh, there was a time we weren't getting any, any vehicles. There was a time we weren't having a public safety. Our, um, response times were beyond the capacity and, and we've ever moved that ever so slightly. And I want us to, to recognize, uh, I was on a call and in that call, we arrived before the ambulance. And we were able to apply first aid, uh, to a Vietnam War veteran that he wound up living through that episode, right? And it was just a matter of seconds, a matter of minutes. And could you imagine if that response would have even been more detained? His wife would have been a widow. That young man still lives today. I, I know he's not young. I, I realize that. But that experience to me put a whole different value on life and public safety. These individuals and our whole city team do it out of a passion because no one is getting, uh, paid. I'm sure a lot of our staff can go get, make more money somewhere else in the, in the private sector. So I am definitely for maintaining, uh, so that we can increase our public safety. Deputy Mayor. So I think that's enough. You have four individuals on the dice that are putting their value. I will stress, um, with what Councilman Hammer said, he wants that guaranteed. You have, I know you said you had a letter of intent for that price. Nothing can go wrong with trying to get those, those fire trucks and, and serve those, those men. Is that enough for you? So, like, this budget workshop is now adjourned.